At this time, we're going to have our invocation by Chris Ukert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for being a God who just always listens to our prayers and just meets us wherever we call on you and in the moment, Lord. And I just thank you for being that kind of God. I ask that your presence fill this room tonight, Lord, that you bless all those who are a part of tonight's conversation, Lord, that you give us discernment and wisdom to take actions in ways that are pleasing to you, Lord. And as we go through tonight's business and all the challenges that we may face in the coming days, I just ask that you place a reminder firmly in our heart that there is no challenge that's beyond your reach. And, Lord, just touch us in all ways. Give us the peace and comfort of knowing that you were a God that surpasses all things, Lord, and you're a God that moves ahead of us in all ways. And I just ask that as you move ahead, you just clearly outline the path that you would have us take before us. And, Lord, just give us the clarity to see that path. Give us the courage to walk it and just allow all of our actions and thoughts to be pleasing to you and bring others to know you better. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chris. This time, I'll call our motion meeting order. Ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. It will be led by Commissioner Walker.
I place the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll ask if any of the commissioners have a conflict of interest with any item on the agenda. Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move to the approval of the agenda. Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Motion of a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Then, for items for presentation, our first one is the service awards by Dolores.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We have two Beaufort County employees here tonight to receive their service awards. We have Ms. Melissa Beecham with 15 years of service, and she's with Emergency Management. Next, we have Mr. Charles Bennett with 25 years of service, and he's with our Water Department. We have a number of other employees that couldn't be here tonight that I'd like to acknowledge. We have Mr. Matthew Jackson with 10 years of service with the Department of Social Services. We have Michelle Bateman with 15 years of service, also with the Department of Social Services. Tiffany Leggett has 15 years of service, and she works at the Department of Social Services. Cassandra Copper now has 10 years of service with the Department of Social Services. And we have Shanna Campbell with Tax Administration, who now has five years of service. We also have Ms. Wendy Coltrane with the Department of Social Services with five years of service. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we're down to public comments. Steve?
Thank you. The concern I wanted to express tonight is about the appearance of DEI in our community college. There was a poll recently that showed over 70% of Americans between 18 and 24 believe that all whites are oppressors and deserved to be discriminated against in society because they were oppressors. No other age group believes that. Reason for this is because in our colleges and our schools, we've had woke concepts of CRT and DEI being indoctrinated into students. DEI officially stands for diversity, equity, and inclusion. But all of those terms have been distorted by a sort of Orwellian Newspeak and don't represent the meanings that all of us grew up understanding. It's a whole new definition they give to them. Michelle Morrow, who is running for Superintendent of Public Instruction, describes the new DEI as actually representing discrimination, exclusion, and indoctrination. Sean Ono Lennon, the son of John Lennon of the Beatles, simply says it stands for dumb, evil idiots. Now, this is coming to Beaufort County Community College. There was some kerfluffle over a senior administrator being sent for training in DEI. But they've also established a full-time slot, transforming another job into a DEI coordinator. So this is coming big time to Beaufort County Community College. What we ought to be promoting in the way of diversity is the concepts of Dr. Martin Luther King, that people should be judged on the content of their character, not the color of their skin. That's the proper view toward diversity in America. Now, many states are moving against DEI. A month ago, Utah became the most recent state when the governor signed a new law getting rid of DEI in the education process in Utah. Last week, the University of Florida implemented Florida's law by firing 28 staff at the University of Florida in their DEI program. What I would suggest as far as nipping this in the bud in Beaufort County are two things. One is using your power of the purse to prohibit county funds from being used in any way to implement DEI. And also, like Florida did, prohibit them taking outside funds for DEI as well. And the second is that when you approve board members for the community college, look at how they stand on issues like this and make sure we've got some board members looking over their shoulder. I think you've got some tools you can use to keep this out of our community college. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Gray?
Hello, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm here again to speak about the problem that we're having with the sex trafficking children going on here. Since I came in and spoke last time and told you all the people, the four people that started this organization, on December 5th, at 2:30 in the morning, we had a drive-by shooter in my house, shooting at us. So in February, I was contacted by Missing and Exploited Children, an analyst that told me that she had looked into my allegations, found them credible, warranted an investigation, and now had turned it over to the FBI, that these people in this organization and the Sheriff's Department needs to be investigated in the sex trafficking of children going on here. I put together some of the first things that has been done to me and my child illegally from me turning in these people. I've started putting some stuff together. Let's see. Oh, and also, the Daughters of Worth in Greenville have been doing an excellent job. They, just the first month and a half of this year, they have rescued and relocated 10 girls out of this, right here in this region. Again, bless them. God bless them. The first thing was, when I started turning this in, was I had bought a trailer, a Williams Martin trailer car. And I had that paperwork to me in April. And then, just in May, they turned it around and took my trailer from me, from the papers, where I got the paperwork, spinning tires on dirt. And I had just gone up and tried to get them to get charges on the man that spun rocks and dirt, on my child, a pedophile, a convicted pedophile that known to hurt children, they would not do anything. So I did get upset, and I spun tires on that same road. They put charges on something that I was told that they could not, it was not illegal, they could not put charges on him for trying to hurt my, for hurting my young'un, they put charges on me and then took my home. I've got paperwork. Jason Williams sent me a letter when I first, the sign that I put in my yard about these people and the corruption here. In fact, the sign said, "They get away with murder, prostitution of own children. Business associates of A.G. Schwanner corrupt courtside with prostitution ring, pedophile, rapist, not with eight-year-old child and dad." AR Singleton, this is who they are. He threatened to sue me, but of course, when I told him what was going on and asked him if Mr. Schwanner had him in his prostitution ring too, they never got back up with me again.
One more minute.
I'm about done for this session. Like I say, I'm going to hand you all some, and there's some paperwork in here where I talked to, a discussion between me and the headwoman of this, and saying that she would not, she put her mother into prostitution and would not be putting my child. She says, "Don't expect you to be scared. Her mom was selling ass long before she ever worked with me, and I didn't sell ass. I sold tongue, which is legal now, and I worked for Dominion in another state." Again, thank you all. Well, we are getting some work done.
Okay, we're down to legislative updates for elected official, and I see neither one. So we'll go to items for consent. Is any item need to be pulled by one of the commissioners? Got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of the items for consent, raise your right hand. Those opposed? All right. Items for decision. Tax Assessor. Lloyd?
Good evening.
Good evening. Hope you all well. Thanks for reappointing me here.
That was in the items for consent, wasn't it?
That's right.
Okay.
The easy part, we hope. So got another pretty easy one for you, but I'll have to bring it to you all so that if we need to be fluid on dates, we can be. As you all know, the Board of Equalization for this year, need to go ahead and set dates for that. We are still on a off year. Next year will be a revow year. We'll do that a little different. But for this year, it's looking like the best dates. And if you recall, statutorily, you have to do your Board of Equalization review, opening and closing. You have to do it between the first Monday in April and the first Monday in May. So the two dates that I would recommend would be the 22nd and the 23rd, or the 29th and the 30th of April for Board of Equalization.
April and April.
Yeah. You don't want to get into May because they're going to cut by the first day. And we can do much if we needed to, but April usually works out. They're giving people more time.
Sorry. Sorry about that.
Either the 22nd and 23rd, or the 29th and 30th. Or if you wanted to do one in one week, one or the other, we can do that too.
What's the wishes? Is everybody okay with the first one? Or is... Five with me. Here again, we need four. Is that right?
That is correct. We do need four of y'all to attend, if possible. And we do like to do it as an opening and in a closing, do it a separate night to be official, follow that guidance.
You got jury? Yeah, 22nd, 23rd. Everybody good? All right, we stick with the first choice.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
That's it? All right, we're down to manager request for waiver of interest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you note in the agenda item, Ms. Carrie Anderson is asked to address the board regarding a request for waiver of interest on unpaid property taxes in 2019 and 2020. She has since paid that full amount and is requesting that the board waive the interest. You have attached a copy of the bills. You'll see that there was a tax software error that resulted in her parcel number being substituted for the zip code in her billing address. That error has been corrected. In 2019 and 2020, the bills were advertised as delinquent. And you can see from the bills, there were years that the address billing was incorrect, but the bills were paid. So you have a copy of that. So we've reviewed this internally with staff, and it's our belief that it is not considered a discovery under the statutes. And because of that, we don't feel the board has the authority to compromise the bill. But Ms. Anderson would like to address that with you.
Good evening.
I do have some supporting documents. If I can hand those out. Play nice now because I don't have enough for everybody. Sorry.
We can share.
So I've reviewed the agenda item identified as my request to a waiver of interest. The county assessor is in violation of North Carolina General Assembly Section 105, 369, B1, which states, and you all have copies right there in front, "Notice to the owner: After the governing body orders the tax collector to advertise tax liens, the tax collector must send a notice to the record owner of each affected parcel of property as determined as of the date the taxes became delinquent. The notice must be sent to the owner's last known address by first-class mail at least 30 days before the date the advertisement is published. The notice must state the principal amount of unpaid taxes that are a lien on the parcel to be advertised and inform the owner that the name of the record owner, record owner, as of the date the taxes became delinquent, will appear in the newspaper advertisement of delinquent taxes if the taxes are not paid before the publication date. Failure to mail the notice required by this section to the correct record owner does not affect the validity of the tax lien or any foreclosure action. The fact of the matter is that the county failed to send the notice of non-payment of taxes to my last known address. Instead, the county sent the notice to a non-existent address. This fact is admitted in the agenda item as submitted by the county manager. He admits that due to a tax software error, the parcel number for the property was substituted for the zip code in my billing address for the notices. The county was then put on notice that the address was not correct when the notices were returned undeliverable. Instead of checking to see that the address was not the last known address, the county failed to take action to properly notify me pursuant to the North Carolina state policy. Instead of apologizing for failing to comply with the North Carolina protocol, the county manager claims that I'm still responsible to pay fines and penalties associated with the non-payment of the 2019 and 2020 taxes. Simply put, I was never put on notice of this issue. I did receive tax bills for '21, '22, and '23, so there's no reason I would be put on notice that the county tax assessor or collector did not have my proper address. And I will interject at that point that what Mr. Allagood showed you is not the bill I received. You have the bills I received right in front of you. They have the correct address on them. So why the bills came to the correct address, but the notices did not, something in our system, tax software error, I guess. Furthermore, in all of those tax bills which are attached here too, there's no indication that any unpaid taxes exist. When I asked the tax office employee, Mr. Kenyon, why it wasn't on my bills, he stated that it should have been, and it's on his computer file. So again, whatever he was looking at is different from what I'm looking at. As you can see from the paper bills that I received for those years, there is no mention of unpaid taxes for many previous years. I have excellent credit, and I pay all creditors immediately and in full. If I had been made aware of the situation in 2019 or 2020, I would have resolved that action immediately. As stated in the agenda item, I have paid all the taxes for this resident every year that the taxes were owed. I was appalled when I finally received notice of the unpaid taxes, and I took swift action to rectify the situation. I find it disturbing that the county received numerous returns of notices of non-paid taxes because the county had used that non-existent address and never even looked at the address to ensure it was correct. What is even more troubling is that the correct address was used when sending the tax bills. It would have only taken a few minutes for an employee, three minutes maybe, to check the address so that the county would have been in compliance with the North Carolina state protocol. I understand that inadvertent mistakes happen, but I would find it alarming that our county manager would recommend that the board look the other way on this clear failure to ensure that the tax office is handling its matters correctly, instead of just apologizing for the tax software error and removing any fines associated with that error.
That's involved, as you requested.
It's right around $1,000 in penalties.
Oh, that's interest and penalty.
That's interest. Yeah, I don't have a breakdown on it. They didn't provide me with a breakdown on it.
Let me be sure I understand what happened. You say that you never got a bill the first time.
No, I got the bills. You see, I got the bills, the annual bill, and I always mark it that I've sent checks. For some reason, and I cannot explain why, checks were never cashed. So whether it was a mail issue, we were in the middle of a pandemic, whether it was, I don't know what the problem is, but it was never received. But I did receive the bills. They came to the proper address.
Well, this is going to sound harsh, and we'll hear the rest of this before I decide how I'll vote on this. But taxing hasn't changed since the time of Jesus Christ. It is up to you to pay your taxes.
I understand.
And actually, under the law, other than the notices that you referred to in the general statutes, we're not even required to send you a tax bill. We're glad to do that because we want to get paid, and we want to help you pay us all you can. So this is a particularly naughty little situation. Thank you.
Thanks.
Other questions or comments? I just have one. You said that your checks were never returned to you. And so, did that not set off a red flag for you?
Well, you know, that's a pretty reasonable question. Life circumstances at the time were pretty crazy. A lot of money flowing through my checking account, and I did not notice that the checks did not go through. When I got this letter, I honestly thought all I have to do tomorrow is go to the bank and find the canceled checks. I was shocked when I went to the bank and they had not been cashed. So I can't, I can't explain that. That's a bad on me for not looking through my account to make sure. I assume, since I never got a notice, you know, you pay your bills. If something happens and a bill doesn't get paid, every other entity that we pay bills to sends us a notice, you know, a reminder or a warning it didn't get paid. And in this case, I never got those notices. But my intention was from the beginning to pay them.
Commissioner Reba votes.
Let me just clarify. The contention is that we didn't cash the checks, therefore your taxes weren't paid.
No, that's not the contention. I fully, completely understand my taxes did not get paid as I intended, and that is on me. And I, you know, my issue is that for five years, I was not notified that those taxes were never complete, that the process was never completed. So I guess over this five-year period, there's some copies in there of how many times they sent things out to me, and that they were, the mail was returned. Now, on their notices, it just says mail returned, but I've checked with the postal service. And if you mail something to somebody that has an incorrect zip code, it goes back undeliverable. And often, the mail carrier will mark it, you know, they'll mark through the incorrect part or something. So there's at least three notices on here that they received back, and nobody bothered to check and see why it was not delivered to me. I've never moved. I've lived at this address all these years. All my bills come to me. All the statements came to me. There was an error here. If I'd have received the very first notice about this, I'd have done just what I did when I received this, when I'd have came right in here and taken care of it immediately. I'm even, I'm even understanding that there might be some tax or penalty between the time that it was due and the time that the first notice went out, because I would have been paying an interest or a penalty at that time, and I'm okay with that. I owe that. But for it to run for five years and nobody notice that it's just the wrong address, it's a bad zip code.
So the issue is that you didn't receive notice that taxes weren't paid.
Exactly.
Because of the wrong zip code.
Yes, because of their software error.
But what was the reason why the taxes weren't paid?
I cannot explain that. You can see from there, I wrote checks. I keep really good records.
Okay, so the reason the taxes weren't paid is because we didn't apparently cash the checks?
Or they didn't get to you. It is even possible that, you know, in my, in my process of mailing them, they got lost somewhere in my house. I have no explanation. I'm not trying to say, you know, that...
So...
It's your fault that I didn't pay my taxes. I pay my taxes every year.
But your taxes were paid every subsequent year.
Yes, sir.
To the year in question.
Yes, sir.
That should have been a red flag to somebody. Well, if I understand the state statute, and I've been a commissioner for nine years, and we've had this question come up from time to time, we have never, we have never been told that we had the authority to waive this as commissioners.
So, Mr. Chairman, that was a discussion we had with our staff, and if it is a discovery, and the assessor or the collector is happy to talk to that, I'm sure, if it is a discovery, the statutes allow the board to compromise, to think, you can compromise. But this is not a discovery. This is not the discovery process. The bills were advertised as delinquent in the paper.
Mr. Allagood, are you saying that the state statute that says that you have to notify me 30 days in advance of that advertisement, that that's not right? Is that what you're saying? Because that is your responsibility from this that I read. I'm not an attorney by any means, but I do see that that's what it says.
You're correct. It says, "Failure to mail the notice required by this section to the correct owner does not affect the validity of the tax lien or any foreclosure action."
But you sent it to the correct owner. I am the correct owner of the property. You did not send it to a valid address.
Well, that's true, but let me back up for a minute. Over the years, we have settled issues like this, where it was gray, neither black. Over the years, we have settled issues like this, where it was gray, neither black nor white, to fall into any particular thing. What commissioners have to be aware of is that if you settle an issue like this and it turns the wrong way, then the settlement amount comes out of our pocket. So you want to be careful what you vote.
So it's better that it comes out of my pocket than your pocket, is what you're saying?
Do you reconcile your bank statement on a monthly basis?
I do not.
You do not?
But I don't know that there's a law that says I have to do that.
Well, I'm not saying that.
Yeah, I do not.
But that would have been one way that you would have found.
It sure would have, yeah. And prior to the year of 2019, I did do that. Like I said, there were some very extenuating life circumstances at that time that I did not. So shame, shame on me for that. I certainly would have picked it up. I have now gone back through and got the canceled checks for all the other years and stapled them to my, my letter, so that I now know that.
Are you ready for a motion?
Yes.
I move that we settle this issue by refunding her or giving her credit, whatever, however it works out, for the amount of money that's between the amount that she owed when the first notice was sent as a violation and the subsequent years that were added to this, which would be, I think, about $800 in that neighborhood.
I don't have a breakdown at all, so I don't know what it was.
So, Mr. Chairman, it's 872.21, $870.21.
Is there a second?
I'll start it.
Okay, we got a second. Any more discussion before we take a vote?
I've got something to say.
Yes.
I've been in your situation before. A mistake was made by the assessor. I caught it, asked him to fix it. He said he fixed it, went on and on and on. I didn't check as closely as I should. I paid a lot more taxes than I should have, and there was no way for me to recover, even though the assessor had made this mistake and had verbally told me every year, I fixed it. We got it fixed, and we got a new assessor. He's sitting right over there right now. Let me just say this, and I'm gonna vote no, and I'll tell you why. The interest you're gonna be paying with us is very cheap. It's good interest. I have to pay every now and then when I have trouble paying my taxes, and I'm glad to have that interest to pay that's not exorbitant. So I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to vote against it.
Any, any other comment? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, the next item for discussion is Commissioner Richardson, the new school.
The, we're in a situation in Beaufort County right now that we've been in before. When we did the 30-something million dollar bond issue 15 years ago, or whenever that was, the school board was allowed to take the money and run with it. That became a total disaster. We wound up, instead of spending $32 million in the bond issue, we wound up spending probably another $10 million. And the reason was, we didn't ask for a budget. We didn't ask for what you're doing. And every time we turned around, Jeff Moss was in here telling us he had to have more money, and weak commissioners granted the money. We shouldn't have been doing that. And what has happened to us today, because we allowed the school board to make all of those decisions, what's happening to us is the new schools that are building in Beaufort County. Matter of fact, all the schools in Beaufort County today are only half-full. Now, the superintendent agrees, disagrees with me on that. That's because he went out and had his own private study done, but the study that was done by NC State, it's an independent study, says that less than half of the schools are full. That's a lot of vacancy places. And here we are, out putting a lot of money into another school building, and are we gonna wind up with something that's overbuilt? That's one issue that I have. For instance, they came back and said, oh, by the way, we gotta have another million dollars for furniture. There's no money for furniture in this budget. That's because they didn't put it in there. Then they came back and said, we need money for a parking lot, pave a parking lot. That's because they didn't put it in there. Commissioners have a fiduciary responsibility to the citizens of Beaufort County to make sure that this, and I'm approximate because nobody's given me any hard numbers, this approximate $52 million is gonna be spent for we don't know what as commissioners. And we are elected to look after your money. So we need to ask the school board several questions and for it to be presented properly, because they have an architect who's designing a school that the commissioners don't know, don't even know what is gonna be built. Excuse me. You're gonna cram 1,100 people, children, between the ages of five and eight years old into one building. Think about that. Think about the coals that go around and all of this other stuff. How is this building gonna be designed to accommodate these children? You're gonna have about 600 cars show up at one time to get these, pick up these students when school is out. How are we gonna do that? We don't have answers. We have, the commissioners have the responsibility. The school building belongs to the county. It does not belong to the school system. It belongs to the citizens of this county. This board is sitting up here, very proud of themselves for dumping approximately $12 million that they don't know how it's gonna be spent into, and I'm on the wrong issue. I should have been on the first one. I just realized that. But let's do this one, then we'll do the other one. We don't know how this money's gonna be spent. We have, we have not been presented with any budgets, and I would dearly like to hear about the design of the inside of this building and about the security features that go with this building, and how this building is gonna be laid out, and how we're gonna accommodate the traffic when all these children get out of school at the same time and they flood into parking lots. How is this gonna be managed? We, as a board, are entitled to know this. The taxpayers are entitled to know this. The people who have children who will attend this school are entitled to know this. We're doing, we're making the same mistake that we made 15 years ago. We're allowing a bunch of people who don't know what they're doing to build a school building. Nobody over there has ever built a school building. They know nothing about construction. They know nothing about bid process. They're hiring people who do their bidding. I've been a consultant for governments. I know how it works. And unless we get some into this and find out what's going on so that we can provide some direction, we're gonna have another disaster on our hands. So my request is that this board, number one, request a budget, well, let's make it a motion, that this board request a budget from the school board, and that we request sketch plans, which are in existence. You do sketch plans before you do designs. Sketch plans of this school building, so this board can go over it, and the people that want to comment can, and that all of this information be made available to the public.
Second. And I'll make that second, understanding that more information is better than less. I mean, so far, we've jumped headlong into this new school at $383 per square foot. We have no site plan. We have no knowledge of how it's gonna be constructed. I mean, we've seen some pretty pictures, but that's it. That's not enough to approve that much money. So far, we're looking at $10 to $12 million it's gonna cost the people of Beaufort County. I've heard numbers less. There's been some discussion about how it's gonna be in the small, single denominations of interest, maybe 3%, 4%, 5%. What I heard was 19%. And 19% of the amount of money they were needing to build this school building at $383 per square foot came up to a little over $10 million. Now, we're seeing that the money we're gonna be getting is a little bit less. Now, we're talking about $11 million that's gonna come from the Beaufort County citizens. And I don't think we're gonna really know what the final analysis is gonna be until sometime to come. I think we have to keep a stranglehold on the cost of this building, how it's done, how it's created. If there's mistakes made, since this is a Beaufort County building, since we are the taxing authority, since we are telling the citizens of Beaufort County that they must come up with this money, we are ultimately responsible for this building. So I think this is a worthy motion to be made. I second it. Hope all of you will join in.
Okay, before, before we take the vote, let me bring you up to date. I was invited, along with the county manager and the vice chairman, to attend their first meeting in Greenville at the Architects', and I was the only one that was able to go. And at that, they passed out of time line, and you've got a copy of it, it's in color, that shows the different aspects and the amount of time that it takes. I'm not gonna go into any detail on that, but what I will tell you is that they are gonna have a meeting. The first meeting is gonna be April the 11th at the Ed Tech Center, and they're gonna have a meeting every, every Thursday, the second Thursday of the month at 12 o'clock, and we are invited to attend as they walk through the process of building these new schools. So again, I'll tell you, the first one's April the 11th at 12 o'clock, and then they're gonna do it every, every second Thursday of the month. And that's, all we did was just talk about the timeline, and we're invited to attend. It's gonna be at Ed Tech. I call it Ed Tech. I think there's a new name for it now. So.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification.
Yes.
When you say Ed Tech, Ed Tech is actually over at Chaco Winnity.
That's right.
So at the high school. So it's the, what they call the professional development. Right. The building, oh, yes, chairman.
Yeah. So.
Act of fear street. Act of fear street.
But they, they want to be as transparent as possible with the citizens and with us as commissioners. So I would invite you to attend and see the progress that's being made and issues that come up from time to time. And there will be a budget that will be shared.
Let me point out something here. You're on the same track that we were on 15 years ago. We had.
Not, not, don't say you, but not me. I was not here.
We are the board.
Yeah.
The, we the board.
But I was not, I was not in the process.
I'm trying to keep you from making the same stupid mistakes that were made then.
Well, I would prefer that you keep this friendly and not call me stupid.
I am. What's going on here? Yes, I'm calling you stupid if you bought that. Because that's not how it works.
You need to apologize to this or something.
No, I'm not apologizing to you for anything. You have assumed.
You're just a bully.
You have assumed authority that you don't have. You went to a secret meeting without notifying the rest of this board. You are only.
There's no secret meeting.
You are only empowered to conduct the meetings of this board. You and the vice chairman are not empowered to go and represent this board anywhere at any other meeting without notifying us in advance.
I would, I would ask our attorney, if I get invited to go to a meeting and there's no action taken, is there anything illegal about that? Be careful. Huh?
No, I don't think there is.
Okay.
There's no action.
No action was taken.
No, wait a minute. You are huddling with people who are making decisions about how to build a school in this county, and you have bought into their scheme that they use before. What they're talking about is a construction meeting that all people who do large projects like this do. I'm talking about the Board of County Commissioners doing its job and asking for a budget now, call it a preliminary budget, a budget now, and a set of plans, and all of this board participating in the process. The Washington Daily News was very clear when it said in the paper, three people got us a new school. It was the Superintendent of Education, and it was the Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners, and the county manager. That is not how democratic government works. And you are way out of line. The people of this county deserve better. These parents deserve better. And if you're gonna, and you guys sit here and vote this budget down. I want you to do that, because you're gonna suffer.
We're gonna have a budget, but we're not gonna put them under pressure to give it to us by the next meeting.
A preliminary budget by the next meeting? I can scratch one out on one sheet of paper. So can they. I'm not buying this stuff, Frankie, of you covering up for the schools and the school board, because they're gonna build a school, and when people are unhappy with it, you're probably gonna be dead or retired. You're not gonna, you're not gonna have to answer for this. You owe the public a lot more than you're giving them right now. And these secret meetings that the rest of this board don't know about are illegal meetings.
The reason I got part of the credit is I went to a meeting that, three years ago, with the lottery.
And you were not there. You didn't participate. You didn't participate. I dropped in on meetings, so do you. You know how that thing works. Stop spinning the truth.
Well.
All the questions?
All right. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed? You wanna get to your next item?
My next item, I'm gonna be very brief with this. People can get upset, they can get mad if they want to. I wanna see the same things presented in the minutes of a meeting that are presented to the board, that are presented to the board. I do not want to see items reworked and summarized when I'm sitting here trying to ask questions that are being shut down, and then all of a sudden, it appears in the minutes of a meeting as if it were a done deal, as if it had been done properly. What I'm saying is, don't start putting things in minutes that you don't present to these commissioners, because you're gonna get called out on it in the future.
You, you'd like to refer to something specific.
No, I'm not gonna get into an argument with you on specifics. I'm gonna be watching, and I'm gonna call it out if it happens again.
So this is just a fear tactic?
Yes, this is a fear tactic. Don't, don't present one thing to me here and something else in the minutes as official in the law.
I haven't seen it.
That's called dishonesty, in case you don't know.
I haven't, I haven't seen it, and you need to show it to me in black and white.
I ain't showing you anything. I'm watching. If it happens again, I'm gonna be on them.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, so since I represent staff, the board has the opportunity at every meeting to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. If there are any corrections or additions that need to be made to the meeting, the board should make those at that time. Thank you.
I understand. Okay, we're down to Commissioner Etheridge.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna handle the resolution for a county community. No, that's not it. Resolution seeking relief for property. What? Oh, gee. Good, good. We need to start over, huh? Yeah, I'm gonna start here with a resolution seeking relief for property insurance increases. All right, here we go. I wrote this, I guess all of you are aware of it. We need to be diligent, and we need to work hard with whomever we can to make this a distant possibility for Beaufort County. We've heard some pretty high numbers about what they want to seek from insurance, payers, property owners. Everybody's gotta pay insurance, and most of us have to. And it's gonna be a lot of money. So I'm gonna read this now, and then I will submit this as a resolution to be approved by this board. Beaufort County Commissioners resolve to seek relief from massive property insurance increases for local citizens, whereas it is wise for North Carolina residents to seek property insurance for their homes and business, which have, have, which has already become an incredible expense for the, those citizens seeking relief from the possibility of damage and losses not yet inflicted and incurred, and whereas North Carolina's insurance rates have increased demonstrably in the last decade, and now in this era of high inflation across all sectors, North Carolina's property owners are not prepared to endure these continued increases made far worse by a currently proposed one-year increase of a preposterous proportion, and whereas North Carolina's Rate Bureau has requested for 2024 an annual increase of 42.2%, whereby North Carolina's Insurance Commissioner Mike Causey has exhibited a great willingness to take a firm stand against such an exorbitant increase. And now that the North Carolina General Assembly is due to convene in April for the short session for 2024, therefore, let it be resolved that Beaufort County's commissioners do respectfully seek and request that all responsible parties, from the North Carolina General Assembly to the North Carolina Council of State, work within their vast power to use whatever means within their statutory power to provide whatever measure of relief possible to kindly assist our citizens, their constituents, that will be forced to comply to pay whatever property insurance increase forced upon them by any and all parties of such great power to do so. So. So, um, that's it, simply. Uh, I would like for it to go to all members of the General Assembly and to all members of the Council of State, especially Mike Causey, who is working on our behalf. But it would be good if we commissioners, one board out of 100, we commissioners, seven out of about 550, asked that all other commissioners do the same.
Second motion.
Add a motion, a second. Comments? Yes.
I think it's probably a very valid resolution, given the fact that the Commissioner of Insurance has scheduled the hearing in the middle of, in the middle of October, and then he's got 45 days to give his ruling, which of course puts him after the election. Uh, so I don't, I, I think Mr. Causey is probably doing an outstanding job, but I just think there's a, there is an opportunity there for him to, once reelected, to ignore it. So I'm going to vote in favor of it.
Yeah, I don't think, I, I know Mike pretty well, I don't think he's going to ignore it though. Okay.
I, I'm in, I'm in favor of the resolution, but in all fairness, uh, the insurance company is straddled with inflation, just like everyone else. And as they pay out under the inflationary time periods, uh, if the companies continue to lose money, they can move out of the state. Uh, so I think what you're going to find, you're, you're, you're going to find that the commissioner after the election is going to be in a position where he's going to have to grant something. I believe the last time they had an increase, was it in 18? I remember. Uh, which, you know, definitely would not be 42%, but the resolution's going to, I think it's going to fall somewhere in that inflationary rate on it, but.
I agree. And I don't think a lot of people are worried so much about 10%, 12%, 13%, 14%, but 42% would worry some families.
I agree.
Because we're already paying pretty high insurance here in eastern North Carolina as is.
Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion or the resolution, raise your right hand. Thank you. You want to get to your next?
Yeah.
Item?
Next item is institutional corruption, election interference, which is going to be ongoing. We know that through the rest of this year, although today and in the week or so, since I wrote, uh, put this on the agenda some time ago, lots changed. Uh, specifically, I'm talking about Mr. Trump, who's running for office, who will be the Republican nominee. I mean, it's a foregone conclusion at this point, after tomorrow. He will probably already be nominated, at least by the people, through the democratic process. And there are a lot of, uh, states that want to keep him off the ballot. That's been settled today. No states are going to be able to keep him off the ballot at this point. But it, it worries me that there are lawyers and judges and people who thought that the Constitution would bend, would be malleable to their desires. The Constitution is rigid. It's, it pretty much states how we will elect people and what constitutes a insurrection and what does not constitute insurrection. It's something that's never been, uh, actually used except for one time, and that was shortly after the Civil War, which is what the fourth, that part of the 14th Amendment was intended to imply, people that actually fomented insurrection, I mean, real insurrection, not a riot in the, uh, in the Capitol, where they allowed people to walk in and brandish flags and say rude things to police officers, and some, some of the processors got shot. I mean, yeah, that's, that was not an insurrection. So, especially after the summer of George, that was not an insurrection. But, uh, we see, we see what's happening in Georgia. That case is falling apart right before our very eyes. And we see what's happening in New York. That's going to go to the appeal of New York. And then if that doesn't work, it's going to go to the Supreme Court, where the Eighth Amendment and the Fourteenth Amendment will kick, kick in. Fourteenth Amendment, equal protection under the law. Eighth Amendment is, uh, where people are not, do not receive punishments beyond what the public should meet out, which has been done. So this is just something I'm concerned about. I think we should all be concerned about. I will probably talk about it later. Now, the action needs to be taken tonight. If anybody else wants to render any comments, they can.
Okay, we move to the next item. A resolution in support of Beaufort County Community College's desire to construct a skilled trade facility.
At our, at our meet, budget, second budget meeting conference, uh, the president of the college, Dr. David Loop, presented, uh, a concept and plans for, um, expanding their ability to offer skilled trades training. And at, at that, he indicated that that would cost about a million dollars to build the facility that they needed, and he had already secured a half a million from, uh, the Community College Board in, the state, at the state level. Uh, recognizing that we don't typically like to do things midstream of a budget cycle, um, I, putting together, putting forward this resolution, and it, and it seems to me that there was large number, large support for this, but it's a resolution to commit us to, uh, funding that half a million dollars in the next budget cycle. And this would allow them to proceed because it's going to take six months for them to get the plans and the okays together from the state, uh, so they could get a foot up on this process and get going quickly after the budget, thereby providing the citizens of Beaufort County with this facility that's needed to expand this training. We have to grow our own workforce within Beaufort County. We're not going to get it from outside. We need to expand that, that ability to create electricians and plumbers and welders and the things, and the people that are in demand right now within Beaufort County. So the resolution is pretty simple. It's, uh, whereas the need for individuals trained in skilled trades has increased in Beaufort County and surrounding counties, surrounding counties being their service area, and the current, and whereas the current facilities are not adequate for the demand for these skilled trade pathways, and whereas it takes up the six months to obtain all the appropriate approvals necessary before any work could begin, and whereas this board has traditionally only allocated funds for major capital projects during the budget cycle of May-June, the, therefore, this Board of Commissioners of Beaufort County wants to make it known, it's committed to fund in the 24-25 budget, half a million dollars of COVID relief funds for the site, for the skilled trades building. With this assurance, the college can move forward in obtaining the approvals needed.
Add a motion?
That's a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, add a second. Discussion?
I've got a question.
Yes.
If, I don't have a problem with your, I don't have a problem with your resolution here, but when Dr. Loop was here presenting his, uh, budget for next year, if it was such, such a hurry to get it done, why didn't he ask for it before then?
Well, I think the, the reason has been that we traditionally turned those down and said not, outside the budget cycle, we don't normally do that.
But he asked for us to do it in the, in the upcoming budget process. That's what he asked for, right here.
Yeah.
So I don't have a problem with doing it in the process, but I can't.
All I'm doing, all this does is allow him to start right now on the six-month cycle to get the approvals necessary so that when it's approved, he can quickly move towards construction.
Well, you have to have money to get it, get it started and get the approvals, the starting. You don't have to have no money. You just, I mean, you got to get it, bid it and all that stuff. I mean, like I said, I'm all for building this building, but, but I hate to commit myself two months early. We're going to start on the budget in the next month, and I, I intend to vote for it. Don't get me wrong. I think it's a, a great project, but I, I just think that the timing is kind of bad for me to commit myself, where you don't know what's going to happen during the budget process.
I, I have a amendment to this.
Okay.
Over the years, the Community College has taught carpentry out there, they have taught brick masonry, they have a welding shop, I think they have a machine shop, they have some other shops, electrical is already set up. Uh, why don't, my amendment is this, that included with whatever his proposal is, is an inventory of his buildings and the use of those buildings. We have built a lot of buildings at the Community College, and it, the, all, the maintenance of all of those buildings falls on the taxpayers. And I think he's already got the facilities out there, if he does a study of what his utilization of present facilities are and what they are, and I'd like to see that. And I, I, I really can't vote for it unless we, unless we're willing to not make the same stupid mistakes that we've been making. And that is doling out money without knowing what it's going to be used for or how it's going to be used. So did you make a motion for an amendment?
Yes, a motion for an amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second? Okay, there's a second.
I'm, I'm not going to accept that amendment. You can make that mo, a separate motion because that basically says we're not going to vote on this.
Well, it doesn't. It says we're going to vote on it, provide, we're voting to do it, but as a part of the condition, he's going to give us an inventory of his buildings and his uses of those buildings. Okay, gentlemen, we have a motion and a second to do, to amend. We have to take a vote on that. Then we'll go to the original. So, all those in favor of the amendment, raise your right hand. Those opposed. All right, now we go back to the original motion. Discussion on the, any more discussion on the original?
By the way, I don't object to asking him to do that at all.
Why don't you vote for the motion? Stop trying to play politics with me. Your vote stands for what you did, so let it ride. You're not, you're not going to spin me.
Just move on, bud.
You're not going to spin me with your political jargon.
Just move on.
Okay, gentlemen, gentlemen, gentlemen. All right, is there any more discussion on the motion that's on the floor?
One more question to John. Can I just?
Mike.
You, you're not talking about spending no money now.
No.
You're just talking about supporting.
Yes.
Well, I thought that our process in the workshop, I thought all of us supported his idea to build that. If memory serves me well, am I correct?
I, that was my take on it, and that's why I thought we could make this motion and, or this resolution, that would allow him to be sure of that so he can move forward. Okay?
You're saying it would speed the process two months?
It's just speeding the process.
Two months.
No money allocated.
No money allocated.
You just want a paper trail.
It, well.
Yes, that's what you want. You just want a paper trail. And we're unreckless in saying that.
We're, all right, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any, anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of the original motion, uh, in support of the resolution, raise your right hand. Those opposed. Thank you. Okay, now we're down to the.
I'm going to ask them for what you want.
We're down to the commissioner comments. Any commissioner?
From time to time, we talk about the NC State study, and I was there the night that they presented that study, and it was flawed. They didn't include any of the, um.
That's not what I'm talking about.
Well, I know. You, you bring a lot, you bring it, there's a lot of us bring this NC State study, and they did not include any of the preschool, and that certainly occupies a lot of space in our schools. So they were, uh, kind of shocked that, uh, you know, when they, that was brought out. So like I said, that, that, that study's flawed.
Any other commissioner?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you doing the two-minute thing at the end of the meeting?
Yes.
Well, number one, Randy, the school board, the school system set up the NC State study to fail. They did not cooperate with them and give them the proper information. And the study that I'm talking about is a study that was done before that study was done, was done several years ago, still a valid study because the buildings haven't changed, the footprints are still there, all the regs are still there. That's the one that says that the schools are half full. That's the one that Cheeseman doesn't want to talk about. Cheeseman went out and got his own study, hired his own consultants. Don't forget, I'm a consultant. The consultants he hired did what he told them to do. So they made him look good, and that's all they were supposed to do. The, um, I, I want, one thing that I want to bring up is our county calendar that's online up to date, because people are telling me about meetings that I can't find there. I heard there was a meeting of the Affordable Housing Committee coming up this month.
No, it's not been set.
I heard there was a Zoom meeting.
No, not a Zoom meeting.
Yeah.
Don't know anything about it.
So the calendar is up to date as it stands right now today?
There is a Zoom meeting. I should back up. There is a Zoom meeting to talk with, uh, the employee, state, North Carolina State Employee Credit Union about the requirements that they have for obtaining, obtaining a law.
Let's go back to the same thing that you guys got mad at me about several years ago. You had some big investigations about it. You are not doing business in an open state of affairs with the public. There is too much stuff that's covered up, up here that nobody knows anything about until after the fact. So you need to take a hard look at the open meetings law, and you may, need to make sure you get in compliance with it because you've already been gigged one time on this kind of crap, and it is, it is, it doesn't work. The public knows, public knows about that. And I'll say one other thing in my two minutes.
You're, you're.
You need to go back and look, the manager, the chairman needs to go back and look and see what his job really is. He is not the king chairman in the back room.
Your, your time is up.